This is Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm going to begin this virtual meeting by calling roll. Planning Board members, please respond when I call your name. Alden Clark?
Here.
Beth Delisle is absent. Anne Gardner?
Sorry, Bonnie, here.
Thank you. Tanya Hartford?
I'm here.
Liam McGovern?
Here.
Rick Tainter?
Here.
MJ Verde is absent. Don Walters?
Here.
And Bonnie Sontag, I'm here. Lynda Guthrie is our note taker. I will go through the agenda. And then we will start the meeting. This is the Planning Board meeting for October 7th. We will begin with a joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee and Committee of the Whole for the City Council on Short-Term Rental Units, which has been continued most recently since August 19th. After that, the Planning Board will consider an application completeness vote for 177 State Street for Minor Site Plan Review. We will approve minutes from September 2nd and September 16th. We have on our agenda potential zoning amendments. We may continue discussion at that point if relevant for short-term rentals and check in on the proposed amendment in the works for 6C. And then there are other updates from the Chair or the Planning Director, and that is our agenda. Our meeting starts with this joint public hearing, so I will turn it over to Counselor Shan to open the Planning and Development Committee and Committee of the Whole, and then I'll take it back to go over procedures for that public hearing, and then we'll dive right in.
All right, here's Sontag. So this is, I'm Heather Shan, I am the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. My fellow committee members are Counselor McCauley from Ward 5 and Counselor Wallace from Ward 4. We make up the Planning and Development Committee as this is Committee of the Whole. I will also recognize that Counselors-at-Large Khan and Tantar are here as well as a Counselor from Ward 1, Counselor Zee. So I will turn it back over to Chair Sontag to go through the plan for the evening.
Okay. For those of you who are with us in August, you know the drill, but I'd like to review it for everybody. In fact, I'd like to start with where you can find the documents relating to this discussion on the city website. If you go to City of Newburyport, click on Planning Board, and under the calendar, you will see the 10-7 Agenda. Click on that for Proposed Amendments. Click on the documents at the bottom of the list. The first one will be the Planning Board Draft Discussion Points, which we will be going through tonight when it becomes our turn to speak. And above that is the Proposed Zoning Amendment, and above that is the Proposed Licensing Amendment. At this point, I want to reiterate that we are looking at the zoning amendment. I know it's very difficult for everyone to differentiate what is in zoning and what is in licensing, but we will be trying to keep our focus on zoning. And licensing issues may come up for better understanding of why certain zoning amendments are being considered. So the procedure is, we will begin with Counselor McCauley to recap the zoning proposal, zoning amendment proposal. Then we'll call for public comment. When public comment is closed, we'll go for Counselors' comments, and then Planning Board comments, and there may be a back and forth among all of those participants at some point, and then wrap up with appropriate next steps. So for the beginning of the joint public hearing, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor McCauley, please.
Thank you very much. Let me, I'm pulling up my file right now, excuse me for the delay. So we submitted two amendments, and Counselor Tantar, being the cosponsor of this as well, I want to recognize that. And what we tried to do is to conform to the current zoning laws, zoning rules that we have today, to list out in a, an acceptable way, those things that we would, specific districts, definition, just not definition, but requirements as an accessory use, interpretation of how we would want this listed. Basically, it's an accessory to a one-family, two-family, or multifamily use, and it had some specific requirements within that. And the discussion that happened on the, I'm sorry, that wasn't more complete, but the discussion that happened on the 19th was that the Planning Board thought that they had some other inputs that would make it clearer. So instead of reiterating what we thought we were talking about, I was hoping we could jump into what the Planning Board is recommending as opposed to changes in terms of this amendment itself. And before I do that, I'd like to offer Counselor Tantar, the cosponsor of this, an opportunity to comment as well if you would like to.
You know, I agree with you. I think we should dive as quickly as we can into, into the Planning Board's draft talking points. I would also note, however, that I think Attorney John Eichmann is here, and, you know, we received a communication from Jared Hubbard relative to the City of Worcester versus College Hill properties. And at some point, I think it would be very useful to hear from him as to how that would have an impact on what we're doing, maybe even upfront, rather than we dive into the rest of it. So just a suggestion, up to the chairs.
Counselor Tantar, I would like to recommend that we put that off for two reasons. One is that it actually relates to a licensing issue, and as I said at the outset, I'm trying to focus on zoning content, but it could help with one of the proposals that the Planning Board has for adjusting the language. So the second reason would be to look at our talking points. My question would be to the two sponsors and to Chair Shan, do you want us to go through our key points now or after the public comment?
Typically, we do public comment first, but I don't have a problem deferring if Counselor McCauley and Counselor Tantar want to go through the points first.
This is Counselor McCauley. I would rather go through the points first so that the public themselves are not commenting on old information as well, and they can be part of this iterative process.
Okay. Sounds good.
That makes sense to me.
All right. We're doing this on the fly. I'm going to bring in Rick Tainter for advice on this. There's a lot of discussion in the beginning over various points that we hashed out in two different Planning Board meetings. And then on Pages 3 and 4 is the proposed, and I want to make that very clear, proposed draft zoning language that would incorporate the results of that discussion. So, Rick, do you think it would be cleaner and easier for people to take in, especially as we may be asking the public, as well as everybody else who wasn't at those Planning Board meetings, to comment on this, to just read through the proposed draft language?
No.
Actually, I think it would be more helpful, we could skip Page 1 of this document, which is just an overview of what we considered. But from the bottom of Page 1 to the bottom of Page 2, that's really our points that we're making. And then the draft language is just a way to incorporate those ideas into the proposed zoning. So I think that probably the key part is Items 1 through 7 on Pages, bottom Page 1 and Page 2, and just go through that. I think that would be easiest.
All right. And just read it through. Is that what you had in mind, Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, I could just go through it if you want, and just, if people have any questions about any of those points, maybe that's the way to do it, is to look at each point and see whether people have any...
Well, if we start getting into discussion at this point, we are talking before public comment.
Yeah.
I was thinking if you could restrict yourself to just reading it.
Okay, yeah, I could do that.
And then we'll go to public comment, so I ask the public to please listen carefully. Rick will read slowly and distinctly. Many people may not have it in front of them, although I just ran through how you can find... Oh, we've got it on our screen. Does that, Mandy, does that mean that the members of the public can see it as well?
Yes.
That's correct. It was requested that we post it.
Right, but right now, can they read what's on the screen?
That's correct. So I was assuming that you would want Rick to just paraphrase.
No, go ahead and read it, Rick. It's easier, I think, for you than to try to paraphrase, right?
Yeah, especially because I seem to have lost it on my screen, so I'm going to be reading from something else.
Are you good to read it? Are you fine?
I'm good to read it, yes.
Okay, so everybody in this meeting room, a virtual room, just to clarify, we're going to read through these points of discussion that the Planning Board came up with after two meetings that have been published, and then we're going to go to public comment and ask members of the public to please try to comment on this. This will also help you to understand what's in the zoning. So if you're concerned about some other things, they're probably not in the zoning, they're probably in the licensing. You can mention them, obviously, in passing, but we want to hear about these topics that Rick is about to read. Go for it, Rick.
Okay, so the first point is basically, to summarize, it's to say that we think that the short-term rental unit should be listed in the Table of Use Regulations like other accessory uses. The initial draft had them pulled out as part of the Short-Term Rental Unit Ordinance, so just to be consistent with the way the ordinance treats other accessory uses, like bed and breakfasts and also lodging houses, which represent accessory uses of an owner-occupied residential property. So listing short-term residential uses in the residential section of the use table also facilitates comparison with other residential uses. So that's the first point, and that translates into something in the draft language. Item 2, Plum Island rental uses are really a distinct subset of short-term rental uses and should be listed in the use table and described separately from other short-term rental uses, rather than being exceptions to a general rule. We also discussed whether it would be appropriate to list the other three subsets of short-term rental units, that is, home share, a limited share, and owner-adjacent in the use table, but ultimately concluded that this was unnecessary if all three types will be allowed as a right in the same zoning districts. And just as a parenthetical, we talked about whether some of those uses should have different use regulations than others, and ultimately, the consensus of the board was that they should all be treated the same way. So in conclusion, Board members agree that the use for short-term rental unit remain the same as proposed in the August 10th draft ordinance and that an additional use be created for Plum Island. Number 3, in the draft ordinance, the first purpose statement refers to short-term rental units being registered through a clear and consistent process, but the zoning, draft zoning ordinance doesn't prescribe any registration process. Rather, it either allows such uses as a right or prohibits them. The proper place for a reference to process is in the licensing ordinance. Therefore, this particular process statement should be rewritten to better reflect the role of the zoning ordinance. Number 4, and this is a big matter of discussion, and we have some questions for the city attorney. The proposed definitions of various types of short-term rental units overlap with the zoning ordinance definitions of lodging house and bed and breakfast, and the corresponding requirements in the Table of Use Regulations conflict, being less restrictive for STRUs in most cases. In order to address these inconsistencies without having to rewrite the definitions of lodging house and bed and breakfast, a provision should be added that gives the STRU provisions precedence over any conflicting provision of the ordinance. This is the opposite of the usual rule where the stricter provision applies. And when you look at the table, an example would be that bed and breakfasts are prohibited in several residential districts, but is proposed to allow short-term rental units in those residential districts. And if we didn't have this provision, even though the use table said that STRUs were allowed, it would really be prohibited because the stricter ordinance rule applies. Number 5, because the zoning ordinance requires that a short-term rental unit operate under a valid license, it is not necessary to recite the standards for such licensing, including whether the unit must be the owner's primary residence and whether the owner must be present overnight when the unit is being rented. For zoning purposes, the only important distinctions are between STRUs on and off Plum Island and whether the dwelling unit to which the STRU is accessory is the owner's primary residence. So in that regard, we tried to trim down the zoning definitions to be more precise. Number 6, Board members felt that the provision in, well, so basically, provision relating to performance standards in the August 10th draft was superfluous because these standards are already applied to all uses in both another section of the zoning ordinance and in other sections of the general ordinances. So it seemed to be superfluous and unnecessary to include those in the short-term rental unit ordinance.
Rick, before you go on, that one relates to noise, doesn't it?
Noise and odors, I think there's a bunch of things there.
Just so people know what we're talking about there. Thank you.
And 7, although the Planning Board is not required to make a recommendation regarding the licensing ordinance, members were concerned about the possibility of that ordinance facing a challenge because it requires onsite or offsite parking spaces to be provided for the short-term rental unit. This provision does not state, but may imply, a numerical parking requirement, which under state law can only be addressed through a zoning ordinance. On the other hand, parking congestion is likely to be a concern of neighborhood residents. It is suggested that the licensing ordinance explicitly identify adequate parking as one criterion for granting or denying a license to operate as short-term rental. And kind of the difference here is that, right now, the current draft, which is a draft that responded to some previous comments, incorporated a requirement that parking spaces be provided for the short-term rental unit. And as I say, the only ordinance that can impose a parking requirement is a zoning ordinance, but it is a perfectly valid consideration in the licensing process to determine whether there is a, whether parking congestion is going to be an issue. So the recommendation, again, is really to take out any requirement for parking, but add it in as a matter that the Licensing Commission can consider when it's reviewing an application for a license.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, with that as the base for comments, I will open it to public comment. We will ask that you give your name and your address, and that you limit your comments to two minutes, and Liam McGovern will keep time for us. So Andy Port will recognize you, and thank you in advance.
Okay, so it looks like the first person we have is Jacob Cross. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. So, hi, I only got two minutes, so I'm going to try to use it wisely. I only have four points that I want to make. Just about me, I grew up on Plum Island, so I'm not a tourist. I have deep roots to the area. I do operate an Airbnb in town. The first thing I want to address is this idea that short-term rentals are somehow bad for the Newburyport, they're bad for neighborhoods. I just don't think that's correct. It's a valuable service that we're providing. I've had many guests, specifically, I've had three guests that I know of that have stayed in Boston hospitals because they're sick and they need to be in the area for that. I've had lots of guests who are locals who need a short-term place to stay for their apartment getting fumigated or for moving or whatever. I have lots of guests who are on the holidays, visiting family. You know, we don't have hotels or really to speak of in town, and so it's a valuable service that we're doing here. Also, people say that it's detrimental to historic neighborhoods. We just redid all of the brickwork on our 1850 historic building. That cost six figures, and there's no way we would have been able to afford that without the Airbnb revenue. So we are reinvesting, and we take the historic nature of our building really seriously. We've spent a lot of money on that. Second point I want to make is people are characterizing this as regulation. That is not true. This is not regulation. This is a ban in any fair sense of the word. The requirements that you're putting in are so strict, the way this is worded now, of the 200 or so short-term rentals in town, 99% of them are going to be banned. It's very heavy-handed. It's also so complex that enforcement is going to be impossible. Third point I was going to make is, why do you want to even ban them? There's not that many of them, there's a need for them. The guests pump money into the local economy, the people leave the kitchen spotless, they eat every meal out. My building has no complaints, my guests are older, and they don't, they're not partying or anything. I have literally no neighbors at my building, there's nobody around. They could scream on the deck if they wanted to, nobody'd even hear them. I have private off-street parking, but because I'm a four-family, I'm going to be banned, I guess, the way this is written. It doesn't make any sense. And the last point I was going to make is, people are pointing out this, many times I'm hearing in these meetings, this idea that residential areas have buildings that are being run as a business, like that's some sort of a bad thing. Of course it's a business. Okay, it's a four-unit building, it's always going to be a business, whether I mentioned that, long-term or short-term, it's a business, and there's nothing wrong with that, there's nothing nefarious about that. Regulate them, tax them if you want, but this proposed ban is far too extreme, and it needs to be really rethought. Thank you.
Mr. Cross, excuse me, what was your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 186 Merrimack Street.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person we have is Jane Snow.
Hi, Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. I wanted to quickly talk about data, which is, I'm data-driven, and we have approximately 185 units that are advertised in Newburyport in Plum Island, with 127 of them being between Wards 1 and 6. Only 52 of them are registered, so that's only 43% of the units are registered. 16 of them are not registered by property owners, and 79% of them are in Wards 2 and 3, so I question why we're passing this so that they're allowed in all areas of the city. Only 26% of the units from the Airbnb website are registered, that's out of the full list, and I can't help but wonder if they're paying their room tax also, because if they're not doing this, then they're not adding to the community or helping the city. The basic of zoning, the basic tenet of zoning is separate use, and up until just recently, until Andy Port read at the last meeting that they were illegal, if you filed a complaint against them, you were told that the city had no specific regulations and that they were legal, so you really have no data on how many issues there have been with them. I know that the, one of the presenters, Mr. Counselor Tanta, said that the reason he brought this up originally was because of the number of complaints and the level of annoyance, and he discovered that a third of four, a third are, you know, concerned about the annoyance, and some are in the middle. So I have trouble when we're making these decisions and you don't have the data, and so I did compile more data, and I've attached the three things for you and sent it to you. But we, I guess the hard part, too, is to get data at the last minute like we just did. It's hard to make intelligent statements when you don't have all the information, and I appreciate all the time that you've put into this, but I also do not feel, having my personal experiences with it, that they should be allowed in residential areas. I feel that residents have the right to have a quiet neighborhood and not to have strangers coming back and forth.
It's been two minutes.
Okay, the next person we have is Stephanie Nikotich.
Hello? Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Stephanie Nikotich, High Street. I agree with Jane Snow's comments, and I have, prior to this meeting, read through the Planning Board's preliminary comments, and I also listened to all of your discussion at your last meeting. I don't believe the preliminary comments addressed public requests last August that zoning be the primary mechanism for regulating short-term rentals. As a zoning proposal, this remains anything goes. Quoting the Land Court's 2018 decision upholding Lynnfield's ban on short-term rentals, zoning was created and is justified by the degree of certainty it provides to its various designated districts. When that certainty no longer exists, the protections of zoning no longer exist. So I do think that we need more in zoning, and I know that you've gone back and forth on that, but I definitely believe that this needs to be more a zoning ordinance than a full, just leave it to licensing, especially for enforcement reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like that's all the folks that have raised their hands at present.
No.
We do have one more.
Okay.
Joe Clemmons. You'll need to unmute on your end as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, so thank you, you all. I've been involved in this process for a long time. I've listened to this meeting and...
Excuse me, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Joanne Clemmons. My address is 26 Jefferson Street, Newburyport. So I own a two-family home on Jefferson Street. I live on one side and I rent the other. The other side is an investment rental unit. I purchased it to make money. So a couple of things I'd like to say is, why don't we have a noise ordinance in this city? So five years I had a barking dog next door, I called and complained, and they said we don't have a noise ordinance in Newburyport. If we had a noise ordinance, then the complaint about noise would go away. So I also, point number two, I don't understand why you discriminate against people in Newburyport versus Plum Island. Plum Island has completely changed now that city water and sewer. These are not little cottages with short-term rentals. They are Boston city owners who tear down a unit and put up a $3 million unit and live there. So I don't understand that. And I just, you know, just saying that the zoning, I just, I don't understand. And why are you discriminating against Newburyport versus Plum Island? So, and also Bruce Volger, who is a city council person, in one of the city council meetings said, and I'd like you to address this tonight, what is the problem that you all are trying to solve? Can you please define it? So a lot of time and energy and money in taxpayer dollars are being spent on trying to solve a problem. What is it? I don't see big money coming in and buying big buildings and turning them into, you know, short-term rentals. So can you please explain tonight, what is the problem you all are trying to solve? And then maybe we can focus on a solution.
Andy, is there anyone else?
Nope, those are all the hands that have been raised this evening. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment section of this hearing and take it back to the counselors, and I think that last question deserves to be addressed, certainly by the two sponsors and any other counselor who would like to, and that is, and also just your comments in general. What is the problem we're trying to solve? What is the problem we're trying to solve?
Counselor McCauley?
Sure. Well, there's a number of things here, right? And part of it is balance, right? And that's the main category. What we've, what we're seeing here is, on one side, a proliferation of short-term rentals. And while that's, on one side, that's good. People are coming into the city. There's a need for that. There's also an impact to the neighborhood. And some would, those who are hosts say the impact's great. Those who live next door say the impact isn't so great. And we, over the last couple of years, we've seen a number of instances and complaints and intensity of some of the issues that have gone on. We had a truly negative experience in a neighborhood this, just this year, of all years with COVID that, I won't get into the details, but the, the situation was egregious by everyone's standard, right? In terms of number of people, behavior, noise, impact on the neighborhood, et cetera. So it's not, so we're trying, so we as counselors are trying to find the balance. The second part of that is, we do have already on the books, regulation about short-term rental taxes and fees that need to be paid. And because of the, because the state has passed a law and has now, is now collecting our taxes, we're now able to see that, as Jane Snow had pointed out, that a minority of short-term rental hosts are following the rules completely. There are, again, there are good hosts and there are not good hosts. And those good hosts run this as a business along the way. We're trying to find that balance for them. But as you hear from residents as well, we need to find the balance for their quality of life and impact and things like that. So in a nutshell, I won't dominate anymore of the time, but in a nutshell, we're trying to get those folks who are running this business to conform to regulations as listed under state law as well as local law. And we're trying to find the balance for our residents. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Tantar?
Sure. First of all, I agree 100% with what Counsel McCauley said. I would add this, however, especially to the proponents of short-term rentals. And, and we had an opinion by the city solicitor that under our current zoning, short-term rentals are illegal, straightforward, period, not allowed. So unless we do something, we would have to, we, you know, have to run them down and shut, shut them all down, right? And then there are plenty of proponents of that position in the city. So in answer to the question, why are we doing that? We're doing, we're doing it because we kind of have a Wild West situation here where the city solicitor is saying that our current zoning does not allow it. I didn't think so for a long time. My argument a year ago would have been based on some case law, that the law was, was not clear on it. But we have now had an opinion from the city solicitor. And so it's difficult to say that we can just let this Wild West circumstance continue. So we have to do something. And as Counsel McCauley, I put it a little differently than Counsel McCauley. I think we're trying to thread the needle. It is a balancing act. There are, there are opposing forces here and we are, we're trying to find a set of regulations, both in zoning, in terms of licensing, that will result in the optimal solution to everyone. But, you know, acknowledge right off, right off the bat, we are not going to make everybody happy. As a matter of fact, you know, probably a lot of people are going to be unhappy because you have, and we've seen this in public hearings again and again and again, that people don't want any change, think they can, you know, continue with, with the status quo. And there are people who want them completely shut down. And there are a whole bunch of people or somewhere in between. And so that's why this is as difficult as it is. That's why we are spending some taxpayer dollars addressing it. So that's the answer to that question. Thank you.
Are there any other counselors that would like to speak to this? If not, I will comment on what Counsel McCauley said because the issue we had this summer was in Ward Three. And it was an awful summer for the residents of the street that this particular Airbnb was on. We had a, a bus show up from New York with a group of bachelors here to party all weekend. And they did. And it went on all night and it was noisy. It went, we had people coming in at 2:00 in the morning. And this was not just one weekend this happened, but it happened numerous weekends. And this was in a residential area and that's not okay. So I do agree, we need to have, I mean, if we're going to go down the path of legislating short-term rentals, there do need to be rules. And those specific rules, we can't allow a busload of folks to show up and have a party all weekend in a neighborhood. So I think that's one of the things that has to be addressed and that's hopefully where we can go here. So I do see Counselor Khan raised her hand. Counselor Khan, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I thought I would just chime in. Can you hear me? Okay, I hope my headset's working. Okay, great. No, you know, I've been listening to the conversations and my apologies, it took me a while to raise my hand, but I did want to also kind of put in my, my support. I was, my support for this zoning effort. I do think there's some good questions raised from the public comment. I specifically kind of honed in on this zoning ordinance being, you know, kind of, should be what has the, the, the rules and be really kind of straightforward and not ambiguous and not to leave it to licensing. That was something that really struck, it seemed to make sense there. But I do support this and I was actually really surprised when we had that public hearing before everything shut down from COVID, that, you know, anything that's operating currently is illegal and that there is, because it's not in our table of use, it shouldn't be something happening. And so I think that was a really pivotal moment for me from that public comment. So, so thank you. I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Any other counselors want to speak? All right. Chair Sontag, do we want to bring in Mr. Eichmann?
Yes, we do.
This is Andy Port, Attorney Eichmann. Are you there?
He is muted.
You will need to unmute yourself on your end as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, this is John Eichmann from the city solicitor's office.
Just for clarification, this is Andy. Jonathan Eichmann is here to assist with any guidance he might be looking for or if further review is needed, he can circle back. But I don't know if there's particular questions you'd like to ask him.
Yes, there's one to begin with, which is on the table already, and that is to address this issue of why we need the zoning, specifically the fact that there's nothing on the books right now. I think he could clarify that or reinforce what we've heard from counselors so far.
Yeah. If I could just add before Jonathan speaks, I just wanted to note that as a, the Director of Planning and Development, I do think it's important for us to fill that gap in the zoning ordinance for a use category that isn't addressed clearly enough. With that, I'll obviously leave to Attorney Eichmann to speak about it from a legal perspective.
Thanks, Andy, and to the planning board and the council committees. Yes, you're, you're correct. Your zoning ordinance does not address this specific use unless the use would happen to be classified as either bed or breakfast or a lodging house. And I understand there certainly spent some difficulties as to whether a short-term rental, as we understand it, would fall within one of those categories. So it does make sense for purposes of enforcement to try to address the use specifically in the, in the zoning ordinance. I, you know, have looked at the question recently. I wouldn't necessarily say that every short-term rental in the city is illegal. Because your zoning ordinance doesn't address it and it does allow more general categories like lodging houses and single-family and two-family uses, it is possible that a short-term rental could be considered to be included within those categories. However, having said that, it's also possible that the short-term rental could have characteristics that would not fit within those categories enough. It would be prohibited because it wasn't allowed specifically. So I think the idea of addressing short-term rental specifically is a good one, rather than leave it to interpretation with what you have now.
Thank you. This is Chair Sontag from the planning board. We're going to move into planning board comments now to clarify our individual interests in the issues that were read at the beginning of the meeting. And one of them, we might as well just have your reading on right now because we did ask you in advance about this idea, kind of building off of what you just said about short-term rentals could conceivably come under the category of lodging house or bed and breakfast. But to eliminate the confusion for applicants for short-term rentals, could you address our proposed solution where the short-term rental provision would take precedence over the other two if there were a conflict? Is that a reasonable or legal option for us?
Yes, I can. I think that's the right direction to go, that you want to define short-term rental use as clearly as possible to distinguish between lodging house and bed and breakfast. Right now, the amendment would call for the insertion of short-term rental use as a category of residential use at the same level essentially in the table as bed and breakfast and lodging house. So if that were to be the case, in trying to apply these to a specific use, the assumption would be made that a use would fall within one category or the other, but would not be in both, the idea being that they're distinctive categories. The issue though is, would still remain, it may be difficult looking at a particular use unless the definitions are clear to determine in what category it falls. And I note that, I think there's been a good attempt made here with the short-term rental. I see some clear, I'd say criteria for determining a short-term rental unit, one of those being length of rental. There is no such criteria, obviously, for bed and breakfast nor for lodging house. But it does, and I just, I want to point this out now, I haven't been involved in the drafting, but it does raise the possibility that if a short-term rental, let's say a lodging unit is used as a short-term rental, it could also be used for a longer rental period. And in that case, it would raise the question of whether that unit could also be classified when it was rented for a longer, longer period as a different type of use, depending on how it was rented. So I think there is still some thought that needs to be put into this to attempt to distinguish those. And I think to put in the provision that you did put in, saying if there is, I don't think you said a conflict, you said where it would conform to the description of short-term rental of also lodging house or bed and breakfast, provisions of relating to short-term rentals would apply in lieu. I think that's fine. Essentially, the rule is that the more specific regulation will apply over the more general one. But as I said before, here, you're inserting short-term rental use as a specific category at the same level as those other uses. The assumption would then be that short-term rental is a distinct use, different from bed and breakfast and lodging house, and applied to a specific situation, you would want to pick one that this would fall within. So the key is to try to define short-term rental so that that determination can be made by the zoning enforcement officer. And I think you're, you're going in the right direction with this, but I think it could use some further work on that.
Planning board members, we're opening this up for discussion on this particular topic. Would anyone like to follow up with Attorney Eichmann? So that's all cleared, everybody?
Yeah, I mean, it just sounds very reasonable, what Attorney has just said.
Yeah. I guess my question is, when you, Attorney Eichmann, when you talk about a very specific definition for short-term rental and distinguishing it from lodging or bed and breakfast, we are not doing anything other than a general use description in the zoning. So that would then fall under the licensing ordinance for that definition. Is that correct? Or are you asking that it be in zoning?
No, I think I'm, I'm speaking only about zoning. I'm not thinking about the licensing ordinance as being proposed at all. I think you want to be careful not to make the assumption that somehow that you're going to, in interpreting the zoning ordinance, be able to reach across to the licensing ordinance and look at that for, for interpretation help. I think you want to look at your zoning regulation as being specific to zoning and define things within the zoning ordinance so that they can be applied there.
Okay, good. Are there any other questions for Attorney Eichmann at this point from planning board members?
Yes.
Go for it.
So just to, just to clarify, so in the current zoning ordinance, bed and breakfast is an owner-occupied dwelling with up to five rooms for rent. And we're proposing a definition of short-term rentals that actually doesn't have a room limit, a rental room limit, but, but the licensing ordinance does have that. So in that sense, it seems that the way we've got it right now, our proposed short-term rental unit definition or description is less specific than the existing description of bed and breakfast. And they do overlap. And I guess what we're trying to do is not get into the weeds about that so much, is just say, if it, if, if something conforms to both, then you can use the short-term rental unit regulations rather than bed and breakfast. And the key, the key point here, and it's really, it's probably the major policy issue of this entire discussion, from my point of view, is that the zoning ordinance is very restrictive with respect to where bed and breakfasts are allowed. And we, the zoning ordinance is proposed to be very permissive as to where short-term rental units are allowed. So that, what this would effectively do is turn small bed and breakfasts from prohibited uses to permitted uses across most of the city. And then we would be relying on the licensing ordinance to do the regulation. I think that, that's basically, I think, one of the issues, I think that Jane Snow raised, was she was looking for zoning to be more powerful than, than licensing. And the, the mechanism, the framework that's being proposed now is to have licensing do all the, the work on regulating and basically have the zoning just create a framework and create it as a allowed use. So I guess in, in summary, I guess, you know, the, again, what we're trying to do is provide something in the zoning, simple, that would make it clear that even though bed and breakfasts aren't allowed, if they're small, essentially if they're small bed and breakfasts, they would be allowed, subject to a license from the Licensing Commission. And I'm not sure that's, that was, that was clear, the way we wrote it, maybe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either, honestly. I mean, I, like I said, I would read this the way you have it drafted now, as creating distinct uses between bed and breakfast and short-term rental. I can see that a bed and breakfast, as it's currently defined, could meet the qualifications for a short-term rental. But my assumption would be in that instance, that because the requirements for short-term rental were more specific, or would likely to be, I think, in a particular situation, that it would be classified as a short-term rental and the zoning applied to short-term rentals would apply to-- rentals would apply to that unit, it would not be considered a bed and breakfast, it would be a short-term rental. Only, it would only be considered a bed and breakfast if it didn't qualify as a short-term rental. So I wouldn't, that's how I would see that working, the way you have that set up now.
So you think it works the way we set it up?
Well, it could, yeah. I mean, again, the difficulty in all this is going to be applying it to the specific units and rental situations in the city. As you know, short-term rentals are generally run based on an online platform, but the actual use on the ground varies widely between owner occupancy, owner not there at all, the number of persons that rent. I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with all of these variations as well. So it's trying to regulate so that you can apply your ordinance to a specific situation and know how it applies.
I'm going to call on other Planning Board members either to build on this topic or bring up a new one.
This is Tanya. I'm just going to, I'm just going to reiterate, and I think I've said this before, that I think that I agree with the approach of having the zoning ordinance be the mechanism to allow this and not create another, you know, review board for owners to have to go through, and to have a licensing board be the mechanism for regulating. And I think that that, I think that that's where this landed, and hopefully those owners sort of see that that's where we've sort of been moving towards, to make this less onerous and to serve the purpose to allow these to be legal, but that allow the licensing board to really look at the issues and be flexible over time and making changes as needed.
So you're in favor of the draft proposal as we've come up with it?
Yes.
You would not see the need, I don't mean to be picking on you, and I kind of asked you, but everybody else on the Planning Board, would you see a need to incorporate any of the more specific definitions from licensing into the zoning to address some of the issues we heard from the public about creating zoning language or zoning regulation that is more specific, more regulatory?
I don't. I think that where it's written at this point, I think this, personally, this is Tanya, I personally think that the way this is written, I think, serves the purpose that I see this board and this ordinance serving.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
That's Alden?
Yeah, Alden Clark. If it is appropriate that we can defer this to the licensing, my only concern is if it's clear enough, are people going to be only looking at the zoning ordinance to say, yes, I think what I want to do with my house is allowable, and have them go through part of the process only to be stopped by the licensing? It's my only concern. But I think it's, we're better served by having it in the licensing and the enforcement process there.
Jennifer Blanchet is our zoning administrator. Could you speak to the process that Alden is referring to, when people would apply for a short-term rental unit application or approval?
I can't speak to the licensing portion, because there is, at least in the iteration that I understand to be currently before us, there would be no special permits involved. You would either have a by right use in a particular district or not. Someone would simply call, like they do now, and if they couldn't read the ordinance on their own and ask, you know, I live at such and such an address, I am a primary resident for so many days of the year, do I qualify as a short-term rental use? And so that would be all of the zoning process, in fact, that would be in place. As you can see in the table that Andy's just put up, we have either permitted or not permitted, but nothing would have any additional zoning or planning board review. With regard to, you know, whether someone was a bed and breakfast or an Airbnb, there would be some evaluation on that front. We would certainly not look to reconsider any of the existing bed and breakfasts that are sort of grandfathered in for building code and fire code issues. We would not be looking to convert any of those to, or to the Airbnb designation as opposed to the true bed and breakfast designation. So I would, I would want to make certain with our legal counsel that that would not be jeopardized. But that is the only zoning process that there would be.
Yeah, and this is Andy, if I could add to that, Bonnie?
Sure.
I think that speaks to Attorney Eichmann's point about, if at all possible, before adopting this legislation, trying to have clearly distinct use categories, you know, in the use table, rather than having a potential overlap in which essentially the zoning administrator, working with the, you know, the rest of the staff in my department and the building commissioner, have to make a judgment call as to whether or not something is in one category or another, based on, you know, some smaller nuances. It'd be preferable if the uses listed in the table are clearly written enough to be distinct on their own.
Is that different to what we have proposed in the draft table of uses?
Well, I think that was an issue that was raised by the Planning Board members in relation to the last version that the sponsors had provided, which I think is dated August 12th. But I'm not sure that that's an issue in the one that the Planning Board, or the adjustments the Planning Board had recommended.
Can you pull that up? Because it would be page three of the document you had up earlier, so everybody can see it.
Bonnie?
Yes?
I realized, as I've been looking through it, that there actually is an error in that table.
There is, but I know. Go ahead. You're welcome to talk about it.
Yeah, it was just, I had pulled a couple of things from the previous version, so that second line shouldn't say home share rental unit, and the numbering is wrong. It just should be a short-term rental unit or a Plum Island rental unit. Those would be the two categories.
Oh, thank you. That was confusing me.
Right. And so when you look underneath it, it says Plum Island rental unit 111A.
Yeah, so those numbers, the numbers should correspond to what it says in item B with 111 and 111A.
And that's all?
Yeah.
So 111A should be?
Short-term rental, Plum Island rental unit.
Plum Island, so there's, yeah, instead of a D.
Instead of the, right.
Yep. And then down below, the 111A is correct.
Yes, and so the second line of, basically, instead of having a short-term rental unit with a big category 111, that should go, those PPP, PPP should go beside that line.
Yep.
There should be two lines instead of three lines. I apologize.
Wait, I'm sorry. So Rick, are we saying that, so when it says the not permitted, like, so we're allowing short-term rentals in all of the same districts?
Yeah, so the short, basically, we'd be moving the word short-term rental unit down to where it says home share rental unit, as Andy has just done. And yeah, then 111 would be, yeah, Andy's trying to show it. Good job.
Okay, so where it's, so we are allowing short-term rental units in all the districts except for B1, B2, B1, I, okay.
This is essentially the city council's last draft.
Got it.
For short-term rental units. The only difference would be to pull out Plum Island rental units to show that there are separate regulations for them.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question of, I think it's a question for Jennifer, and it's kind of a general question. It addresses also a comment that Stephanie Nikatek made about enforcement. How does the, how does, how does the way in which we've differentiated what is in licensing and what is in zoning affect enforcement? And by enforcement, I'm still, I'm a little bit confused about whether that's enforcing the use itself or enforcing when something goes wrong, should there be a noise issue or whatnot?
So zoning enforcement would entail if someone is utilizing their res, or their property outside of this zoning ordinance. And I believe this zoning ordinance says it's, for most of these, other than the Plum Island, that you still need to have it as your primary place of residence. And I don't remember the specific number of days where we've landed. But if it is not your primary residence, so if someone simply has an investment property and they are renting it as a short-term rental unit, I understand it to be a zoning violation. That would be what I would enforce. If someone has a unit that is legally available as a short-term rental unit, but they are misusing it, you know, they're having, the people are not behaving, the Licensing Commission would step in and address that, give them the warning, and if they have however many warnings the licensing agreement comes up with, they might lose their right to have that short-term rental unit.
Okay, so that's another reason to have the distinction between the licensing and the zoning as we have it now, because we wouldn't want you as the zoning officer, if we have, you know, more detailed specifications that we now have in the licensing in the zoning, then you're responsible for some of those nitty-gritty issues that you perhaps should not be responsible for, correct?
Precisely. And that, the Licensing Commission themselves won't be, you know, responding to a party. That still will fall to the police department.
Right.
And the health department would be responsible for any sanitation issues. But if it is illustrated that any particular unit has an excess of violations, they could lose their ability to maintain a license.
Yeah.
Councilor McCauley has his hand up, Bonnie.
Go for it.
I just wanted to support what was just said by Jennifer. And it's the rationale behind all of this, as opposed to licensing, in the licensing section, it has an application as well as an enforcement section in it as well. And to remove that from zoning enforcement, we thought was a better use of resources going forward. So everything that Leah, you had just said, I want to reiterate and support what Jennifer had to say as well. That's what we had done in drafting the ordinance itself.
Councilor Wallace has her hand up.
Hi, thanks. Just a question for the sponsors. What is the next step in terms of working with the Licensing Committee? I think maybe we talked about this last time. Is it possible that we could have a joint committee meeting with them, just so we can look at this as a whole and talk about these pieces that potentially could go back and forth?
Yes, I'll answer that one. I have reached out to Councilor Devlin, and we are, he is on the hook. We are trying to put a joint meeting together to have a conversation about both the ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be kind of a critical, important meeting, and, you know, Planning Board members or anybody else would be welcome to attend as well. Thanks.
And Councilor Chantar? Has his hand down. Okay.
Back to the Planning Board. I'm not looking at hands so much, I'm just asking you to chime in if you have further comments or questions you'd like to raise at this point.
So this is Alden, just to follow up on the last point, the fact that we have in our short-term rental unit description that a license is required, is that clear enough for the zoning portion, so that the person looking at this is informed, saying I qualify as far as the zoning, but I know I have another step to go through?
Yeah, this is Andy. I know Jennifer can speak to that as well, but we would not consider it a valid legal use unless that license was, could be demonstrated.
The same would hold true, for instance, of a bar. Simply saying that the bar is allowed in that district doesn't give them a liquor license.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to just reinforce our accessory use definition, that a short-term rental unit may be established only in an accessory use to one of the following principal residential uses, one family, two-family, or multi-family. I know that there is concern in residential neighborhoods that this could cause a negative impact. We have tried to mitigate that by saying the, it must be owner occupied or owner responsible operator in the owner's absence, so that there are controls in place, even though it is managed through the licensing. And I think this accessory use definition, while it looks like it's permitted in a lot of places, and specifically in residential neighborhoods, should control for pretty much all of the noise nuisance complaints we've had so far. And it's getting out ahead of avoiding any of those developing in the future. So I feel comfortable with this definition and want to support it.
I just had one more thing, is that there was one of the, someone in public comments said something about, we are essentially banning this use, and I just, I think it should just be said that we are clearly not banning any long-term rental use or any short-term rental use at all. I just had it needed to be said.
Yeah, I was concerned about that. I believe the person was talking about what we call an investment property, where they don't live there, and they are currently using it as short-term rental units, multiple ones. That, in effect, would not be allowed.
Yeah.
So, but it still is available for long-term rental, anything beyond 32 consecutive days. So if they wanted to have shorter than, I don't know, one or two-year contracts, that's still possible. But it's meant to be a more stable rental situation because there is no owner occupied situation.
Yep.
So I think that makes the distinction. I'm glad you brought that up, because that's the, that's the one category where someone could conceivably say, I can't do what I'm doing right now. And that's true, as a short-term rental.
Yeah, but that could possibly fall under a lodging house definition.
If they wanted to go for that license, it's possible. I don't know how many units are involved, and I'm not familiar with the lodging house option, but they could look at some other ways of licensing it to make legal within the city. You're absolutely right. And I think this opens the door to that possibility. And then they want to think about reconfiguring it if they need to.
But the lodging house is different. First of all, the lodging house regulations that we have are as strict as the bed and breakfast regulations. So in most residential areas, a lodging house or a bed and breakfast are not allowed. So the short-term rental units that we were proposing is, in effect, again, opening up more areas of the city to short-term rental, because lodging houses and bed and breakfasts are prohibited.
Right. So if it was in a residential area, then it would, in effect, be banned.
It would be. It bans now, and it would be banned in the future, right? We wouldn't be making any change. I guess, I think it's important for everyone to understand that what this zoning ordinance is doing is opening things up. It's not really restricting anything that isn't already prohibited. So that's, I think that's, it's kind of hard to understand. I think, you know, somebody mentioned the term Wild West earlier, and I think that that's, you know, the case, is that things have been happening. that that's, you know, the case, is that things have been happening. This whole short-term rental market has evolved faster than our zoning has evolved. And so we're just now catching up with it right now. But because it was evolving so fast, things were happening under the radar, and, you know, nobody knew that they were doing things illegally. And now they know. So we're trying to provide an avenue to allow those things where the licensing commission feels it's appropriate.
Anyone else like to speak on part of the planning board? Okay, Counselor Shand, we are at a decision point, I believe, for where to go from here. Do you see any reason to leave this public hearing open?
I don't, but Counselor Tontar did just raise his hand.
Sure.
Counselor Tontar? You need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I didn't think you needed to hear my cat yelling at me. So I wanted to return to Attorney Eichmann's discussion of the definition of bed and breakfast versus the definition of short-term rentals. And if you look in, you know, 5E, the definition of bed and breakfast, as a board member, Taint had mentioned, you know, definition is an owner-occupied building containing no more than five rooming units, not including living quarters for owner occupants. And then it goes, basically, the rest of it is above cooking facilities, right? Definition of short-term rental unit is the accessory unit of a dwelling unit for residential occupancy by a person of persons for a period of fewer than 32 consecutive days in exchange for a payment. So it's not clear to me that those two definitions significantly, I mean, they're almost speaking at cross purposes. One simply mentions, you know, no more than five rooming units for, not kind of the owner-occupied unit, and the other one has to do with length of time that it's rented. And so I'm wondering if board members feel that that definition of short-term rental unit is significantly different than bed and breakfast. I've heard board member Taint a number of times say, basically, "We are allowing, you know, bed and breakfasts in the residential zone," right? And so, you know, again, I'd like to hear whether you think those two, what you're thinking is on those two definitions. Because to me, I don't, and I'd like to hear from Attorney Eichmann as well, I don't think those two definitions do the trick at this point. Thank you.
Can we hear from Attorney Eichmann on that, please?
I think I would agree with what the counselor just said. I think there is, as I mentioned before, I think the key is to try to make sure that the, that these, these equivalent but distinct uses are distinct in definition. And I think he has pointed out one of the ways in which they're not particularly distinct, that short-term rentals are defined primarily by length of stay, and bed and breakfasts are defined by other criteria. So it certainly leaves open the possibility that a unit could potentially meet both, meet both, or fall in both categories. You do have the proviso that if it falls in both, it will be considered a short-term rental, which may, may cover that, but it does leave the possibility, as I said, that a unit could, could fall in both. And as a matter of zoning interpretation, you do have to determine which use it is. It can't be in both, because these uses are essentially equivalent uses in the table that are supposed to be distinct.
Well, I thought that, this is Chair Sontag. I thought that was the point of our, our specially worded section of the zoning, that if it, if there is overlap, that the short-term rental could take precedent if that's what the person was applying for in a residential neighborhood. So if we're covered with that, that's as far as we thought we could go. Now, this conversation starts moving into definitions that are to be covered by licensing. And while not wanting to kick the can down the road and not dealing with it as a zoning issue, I think we have agreed that that would not, that kind of definition would not be in zoning, but rather in licensing. So it's really not up to us to make that decision, as long as this statement stays within the zoning proposal to allow short-term rental to take precedent. Is that correct? Is that a wise thing to do, or should we go back to the drawing board?
This is Andy. If I could just point out two things, Bonnie. One, I think, is for Jonathan's benefit. One is, you're pointing out that the planning board has recommended potentially some language being added to the last version of the amendment that was sponsored by the counselors, which would clarify that the short-term rental unit provision might prevail just to, or its interpretation as that category might prevail, just to prevent any confusion regarding the uses, you know, as they're defined today. The other thing I would just note is, this particular zoning amendment was advertised with the assumption it was addressing short-term rental units. And I just wanted to make sure that Jonathan Eichmann and the rest of the board are aware, there's a requirement under state law that we advertise the scope of what might be amended in the zoning ordinance. I don't know, and Jonathan, maybe you'll speak to this or not, but if we are planning to currently, as part of this amendment that we have before us right now, are we planning to go back and amend other definitions that may not have been within the scope of what was advertised or proposed originally? I don't know whether that requires another notice again, but I think what you were trying to get to here with the planning board recommendation was perhaps to keep it simpler than that by simply adding that language that clarifies which one prevails, if it's an interpretation of the use category.
Okay, so we're good, we're, from what I understand, we're good to go from a zoning point of view with that new language in there. If the, further down the road, licensing wants to look at more distinct definitions, they all fit within licensing, and I think we're comfortable allowing that to happen. Have I got that right, Rick and others on the planning board?
Well, I think, just to bring up the fact that we had talked about going in the opposite direction and copying all of the definitions from the licensing into the zoning ordinance, and that would solve the issue of having something that is more specific. But then we, then we, if we copied all of those definitions in, then we'd have to go back to the use table and list them all on the use table, and we were trying to get away from that. We were trying to be simple rather than complex in the zoning.
And I also remember Jennifer saying earlier in this discussion that anything in the zoning would require that she then have to enforce it, and that complicates matters. So for a lot of different reasons, we shouldn't be doing that.
Jennifer has her hand up. Bonnie?
Pardon me?
Jennifer has her hand up to speak.
Okay, Jennifer.
Well, we were just talking about definitions and that provision you were talking about adding, where the lesser, the lesser strict use would prevail. I still want to go back, and if Attorney Eichmann wants to weigh in or not, but it is my understanding that those pre-existing bed and breakfasts would retain their ability to be such as pre-existing non-conforming uses, even though we're creating this new definition that they might also fall under. So to your point, Rick, that just because we could classify something as a bed and breakfast, or, you know, or something was classified as a bed and breakfast, it doesn't default all of a sudden to being an Airbnb.
Yeah, I think Jonathan can probably speak to this as well, this is Andy, but the, I think what we're talking about here is the fact that there are some existing uses in the city that would be grandfathered underneath the prior definition of, the existing or prior definition of a bed and breakfast, rather than being influenced by this new use that's being proposed, because, as Jennifer pointed out, there are uses that are effectively going to be grandfathered when this new zoning provision is adopted.
Because if we, if we were to all of a sudden classify them as Airbnb or short-term rental units, they are in business districts, and we'd be telling those people, "Those aren't allowed." That is not the intent.
Just to follow up on that, we got a list from Lynn Varney of lodging houses and B&Bs, and I don't know which of those were classified as B&Bs versus lodging houses, but none of them on the list comply with the zoning definition of a bed and breakfast, so none of them really are, would be legal bed and breakfasts, because none of them are owner-occupied, basically, or they have too many rooms. So I don't know that we have any existing B&Bs. We don't have, we don't seem to have any licensed B&Bs that conform to the zoning, the zoning definition, so I don't think we, I don't think there are any that are grandfathered.
Well, this is Andy. Just to clarify again, Rick, we'd have to go back to prior versions of the ordinance when that use was established to determine whether or not it was grandfathered as a given use. So it's, we're not just looking at the current language of the ordinance, but also the language that existed years ago when that use was established, to try to determine whether or not it's, quote, "grandfathered," and in what way or what scope of that use is grandfathered. Perhaps Jonathan could speak more to that, but just want to point that out.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, it's John Eichmann again. Yeah, grandfathering is, as Andy and Jennifer know, and anyone else who's touched it knows, is an incredibly complex issue. The one thing I'd just point out about, and it's very fact-specific, by the way, so the one thing I would point out, though, is that if this ordinance is enacted, the only units that would be grandfathered, so-called, would be units that were legal, zoning legal at the time the ordinance was adopted, and by that adoption were rendered unlawful. And they, if they're lawful when the ordinance makes them unlawful, then they are grandfathered. But, you know, for instance, if a unit is lawful now and remains lawful after the ordinance is adopted, because perhaps now it can be classified as a short-term rental, then that unit is not grandfathered, that unit simply would have to comply with whatever the regulations are.
Thank you. That's good clarification. Are there any further comments from counselors or planning board members at this time? I can't see raised hands for some reason.
Counselor Tontar has his hand raised.
Yeah, can someone tell me concisely, without quoting, what the difference is between Use 110 and Use 111?
Andy, can you pull them up, please? You have the definitions.
I mean, I can, I got the definitions in front of me, I can read it. I just, they basically seem to say the same thing to me.
Well...
Bed and breakfasts aren't allowed in, in every use case within zoning. So they have a more restrictive zoning area and criteria.
I know, but that's not definition, right? That's, that's the use, I mean, just in terms of 110 and 111. Can we do that? I mean, is that, I mean, the distinction is where they can locate? And then how, I don't know.
Well, let me interrupt here, gently and firmly. I think you're getting into issues that are going to be covered under licensing. Unless you can link this to a potential change in any of the versions of the zoning we've been considering, I would like you to hold on to this detail of definitions until the licensing discussion comes up.
Aren't these definitions going to be in zoning?
No.
110 and 111?
That's what we said. They are not going to be in there, because they then require that Jennifer, as zoning administrator, has to enforce them.
We'll have to have a use description within the zoning.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to have a use description for short-term rental. That's it.
And that is, when Counselor Tontar, I believe, when Counselor Tontar asked for the differentiation between the two definitions, he meant the differentiation between the two use descriptions.
Yes.
For short-term rental and bed and breakfast, or?
Yes, 110 and 111.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant lodging and bed and breakfast. All right, we're still talking about short-term rental.
Yeah. And actually, that's really been my consistent point all along, is that how do we distinguish? Because we're basically creating an overlapping definition.
Yep.
And the only, you know, there were fine points, as Counselor Tontar pointed out, that bed and breakfasts talk about kitchens, and short-term rentals talk about number of days. But in reality, a short-term, a short-term rental that is a limited-share rental, remember there were three types of short-term rentals, and a short-term rental that is a limited-share rental is identical to a bed and breakfast, except, you know, except how many rooms we allow them to rent. So that's, that's really the nub of the whole thing. I, you know, if it were up to me entirely, that, you know, if we were rewriting the whole ordinance, I would strip out bed and breakfast and make it just, because a bed and breakfast is a short-term rental. It's a type of short-term rental. And so, so it's, it is, that is an issue, and that's what we're trying to get around by creating this phrase that says, "If it's both, then we'll use the short-term rental regulations, not the bed and breakfast regulations."
Can we not do what you just suggested and put it all in one category? How hard would that be?
Well, you, it would be going beyond what we're doing now. We'd be going into other sections of the zoning ordinance, you know, and you'd be taking out bed and breakfast, and then you'd have to go to the licensing ordinance about bed and breakfast. It would just be...
But it sure wouldn't be tidy. It would be a lot tidier.
A lot tidier, and if we were rewriting the ordinance, that's what we would hopefully do. We're not.
That's, this is Bonnie. So that's why we chose this language that said, "If there's a conflict," that was our simplistic or simple solution to not rewriting other parts of the zoning code in terms of definition, that short-term rental will take precedent. And then everything relating to it, for example, where it's allowed, would, would govern the use of it. So I don't know why we keep discussing this. I guess I'm being either obtuse or tired or something. I think we've got, we've gone as far as we can go with the zoning with this statement that Attorney Eichmann says will handle it. Maybe not the cleanest, most distinct difference between the uses, but it's workable. So I'm trying not to be overly frustrated. I want everybody to hear that I'm trying to be constructive. Could someone help me understand why we have to keep discussing this particular issue?
Well, Chair, I mean, from the, two years ago, when we first began discussing this, I brought up the problem with bed and breakfast and lodging houses and the definitions. We wanted to avoid it. And look, if the attorney, Attorney Eichmann says that this is a fix and will not cause trouble down the line, I guess I can buy that. But I guess I'd like to hear that again from him.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Attorney Eichmann again, if I may.
Please.
I mentioned this earlier, and I do have one concern about the fact that these definitions overlap, and I probably didn't make it as clear as I could have. I think the fix helps to resolve some conflicts, but my concern would be that one particular property could qualify as one, as a lodging house, or a bed and breakfast, or a short-term rental, depending on what day or week of the month it was, depending on how they were renting their property. For instance, if it qualifies as five or more units as a lodging house, and the rental is for a longer period than... is for a longer period than 32 days, now it's a lodging house. If they rent for a shorter period, it's a short-term rental. And that would pose pretty significant enforcement issues, obviously. So one way to resolve that, I don't see that yet, but it could be done, is to simply say if the unit is rented, in question is rented at any time for less than 32 days, then it will qualify as a short-term rental as a class, and it won't ever be a lodging house. But, you know, that would take a little bit of an adjustment to the language. But that would be my primary concern, is that a single residence or unit could, depending on basically the circumstances within any given time period, be one as opposed to the other, and then switch to the other next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Bonnie, that was the question, yeah, that I raised before, is if they are, if they're going through this process and say, I'm allowed to be, you know, by the zoning I'm allowed, but now I have to apply for a license, aren't they applying for a license either as a bed and breakfast or as a short-term rental or a lodging house? So that would define what category they're in. It's really based on what license they're going after. Does that solve the problem? Or does that still say there's an overlap? Because there's already an existing overlap between lodging houses and bed and breakfast. A lodging house refers to five or more people, and the bed and breakfast is up to five rooms. So, I mean, there's still overlap there as well.
Yeah, the license, you're right, will determine what they offer. It also depends on the zoning district they're in. That will restrict them in some ways. And this language that we might want to consider adding, that Attorney Eichmann has just suggested, is, this is very gross language as I'm saying it now, but we can clean it up. If a property is ever rented for less than 32 days, and I would include in that, has a license for short-term rental, that's what it is. And they can't come back six months or during that period, anyway, that they have the license, and then flip it to something else. They might, I could imagine that they could take that, let that license run out, and then come back for something else. I just don't know how that works because I don't have any experience with it. But I think we could clean up the fix language, as we're calling it right now, to really accentuate what is a short-term, what has been recognized as a short-term rental so that it's predictable for the neighborhood as well.
And Bonnie, that can just go into the report that you all are going to give to us, and then the council will end up taking that up, along with the licensing committee, to further, to make this what we're going to put on the floor to have a vote, so.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, you're right. As long as the planning board seems to be in agreement that what we've included in the zoning proposal right now, our draft, is pretty much what we can live with, with maybe a few tweaks, then that's what we put forward. And you're right, that when it goes to the city council for further review, in conjunction with the licensing...
Exactly.
There may be some adjustments that you might even ask us to look at again. I don't know.
Right. I would hope you put all your recommendations into your report so we can take that. And when we have our joint meeting with the licensing committee, we will bring those comments up as well.
Okay. So, anything further before I close the planning board public hearing on this?
Yeah, this is Don. Just one question for Attorney Eichmann. Just so I am sure that I understood what you said previously, it is permissible within zoning to put time limits which would define a particular use?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. What I'm going to propose is we take a motion to close the planning board's portion of the public hearing with the idea that we will submit a report as required to the city council on all of our recommendations on this proposed zoning amendment.
This is Don, so moved.
Do I have a second? And who is that?
Rick.
Rick, second. All right, I will take a roll call vote. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Our portion of the joint public hearing is hereby closed. Over to you.
Bonnie, this is Andy. Could I just ask for one clarification?
Yes.
So recognizing that the comments the planning board has already provided to the city council, and that's the meeting notes from the 2nd and 16th of September, I'm assuming that there'll be another, like we talked about, another written report that's issued, given that Rick was heavily involved with you in the comments that were put together there. The councilors might be curious as to what the timeframe might be for those comments to come back. I'm assuming that there'd be one more planning board meeting at which those comments would be reviewed, and then perhaps after that, it would be forwarded to the council?
I believe we are required by zoning to report to the council during a specific period of time. I didn't have time to look it up tonight when I realized that might be a question. So it'll be within the timeframe that's required after the close of the public hearing. But technically, you're right, we would have to review whatever language that gets put into a report in a public meeting before we would sign off on it and send it to the councilors.
Sure. So with that being said, I guess just for the benefit of the councilors and trying to coordinate this issue or this discussion, which has obviously gone on for a few months, if the planning board is able to look at a draft that's prepared for the next meeting, the regular meeting the planning board has later this month, then that would give the council some estimation of when it would, as a body, or even as the planning development committee, as a subcommittee of the council, have the benefit of the planning board's feedback. And then they could consider, of course, how many more meetings they have left in the calendar year for the amendment to be adopted.
Well, it's not going to be adopted before they look at the licensing. Both of those are going to be carried forward, from what I understand, from Chair Shand. And so I'm not sure that there's a big rush yet on it because they haven't even scheduled any meetings on the licensing yet. But we will move efficiently to get that report to the councilors as soon as our meeting agendas allow for it.
When is your next planning board meeting, if I may ask?
It's in two weeks, on October 21st. So that would be this, I mean, if we can discuss any outstanding issues tonight in the rest of our meeting, and then formulate them by one or more of the members into a written report, we could review that on the 21st and finalize it and send it on to you after that, if that's what you want.
That would be helpful. And we are trying to work on this, both ordinances, before the end of the session. So we do have only four meetings after next week's meeting left, so.
We may be tight on the 21st, but since it'll be a review of a document that, most of it is already contained in this proposal, I think we can commit to that. So sometime in the week after the 21st, you should have it.
Okay.
Do you want to close your portion and sked out?
Yes. So, councilors, I would recommend that we close our portion of the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we got to close the public hearing first.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So just in case folks are wondering, we will continue to have these meetings in our planning and development committee, along with the licensing commission, and we will, licensing committee, and we will also be taking public comment then. This is just the fact that the public hearing has been closed, so. All right. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, councilors. And we will continue our planning board meeting with our agenda as stated.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care.
And thank you, Attorney Eichmann, for attending that portion of our meeting.
Thank you all.
Oh, thank you, Attorney Eichmann.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Okay, planning board, here we are. Our agenda says the next item is a completeness vote on an application for a minor site plan review at 177 State Street. Andy, do you want to say anything about it so that we know why you're asking us to consider it complete?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just throwing up on the screen here just what I think is a simple illustrative graphic from the site plans that were submitted by the applicant. I think Caitlin has already conveyed this with the staff report to the planning board. But in the end, what we're really talking about, you can see in the little snapshot of their plan in this corner, that the project in sight in question is at the bottom of the Route 1 traffic circle, really at the town line. So if I pan back to that whole drawing there, what you're really seeing here is this is the Newbury Port, Newbury Town Line. And so the project in question is actually on a property that largely falls within the town of Newbury. There is a portion here that consists of the four parking spaces and the driveway entrance itself that falls within the city of Newbury Port. The applicant has essentially submitted to us the typical things you would want to see, detailed site plans, obviously the stormwater management report. In this instance, the city engineer has reviewed the stormwater management report, given the minimal portion of it that falls within the city. We had wanted, obviously, to get his feedback, you know, given that it's connected to a public way. And in essence, the city engineer had indicated that, you know, conferring with Caitlin and I, that we didn't think that there was a benefit in having Phil Christensen also do a peer review of this, given that the city engineer had already reviewed it, did not see issues with it. And of course, the town of Newbury is doing its own review of this side of the site where all the water is really being directed to, anyway. So at any rate, I don't, we didn't see the need for that additional peer review of the stormwater. But it does require a minor site plan review and approval, and we recommend that, based on what was submitted, that the board deem the application complete for the purposes of scheduling that meeting.
I'd take a motion to deem the application complete.
I'll make that motion. This is Tanya.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Leah seconds it. I'll do roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Hello, Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes. I think we decide last time that I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, in this case, September 2nd, and then open it for discussion for any edits that people would like to submit, and then we'll vote on it. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for September 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Anne? Okay, Anne is the first, and was it Don the second?
Sure.
I got that? Okay. Comments, please?
This is Tanya. You know, I read through the September 2nd. They were very lengthy. They were very detailed. But I was reading them on a device that I couldn't edit directly on. But it's mainly just like line edits. Like it's a word missing or, you know, spelling error or something like that. So I can, there was no content issues. So if it's okay for me to send that, I can do that. Send those over once I can get to a computer, probably tomorrow, and I'll send them.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Yes, Rick?
I had also a number of small things, but I did have three significant changes. One of them, the first one was on page 20, and it was something where I was indecipherable. And I listened to the recording and I figured it out. And so I believe it's this thing where it says, where what I said was, Rick Tainer said that the conservation district does not permit more than one dwelling unit on a lot, and therefore an owner-adjacent STRU would not be allowed. So basically, Linda couldn't hear it, but I figured it out by knowing my voice better than she does, maybe. The second one was on page 27, another place where my voice was indecipherable. And in this case, it appeared that perhaps my Wi-Fi was going out because it really was indecipherable. But I knew what I was saying. And so this is down toward the bottom of page 27. It's a paragraph that says, Rick Tainer says that was correct. And it said, the correction is, what happens if somebody comes in and wants to do an accessory limited share rental in an existing house that doesn't have two parking spaces? He didn't know whether they were still non-conforming or if they now have to comply with the zoning because it's a new use. So it's just, again, something that was, couldn't be heard, but that is the change. And then the final change in this was on page 32, and it's actually something you said, Bonnie. It was just, there was a lot of discussion about where the money was going to go, CPA fund, and you had brought up the issue of a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust. And just to make it clear, I thought that I suggested rewriting that sentence that begins, Bonnie Sontag had a complicating factor, to say Bonnie Sontag likes the idea of this cost-per-square-foot formula for a general benefit to the city if it's going to the CPA fund. But she would also make an argument for doing something as a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust, just to make sure.
Yeah, I said both. But, yeah, I wanted to make sure the Affordable Housing was in there. Okay, any other corrections or edits?
I sent a couple of them to Linda a week ago or so. So it was just a couple of very small edits.
Okay. All right, so now the motion is approval of minutes as amended. And I'll take the vote by roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. I'll take, do the same thing with the minutes for September 16th, the motion and a second to approve.
Move to approve, Rick?
Second.
Second.
Second, Alden.
Okay. Comments, edits?
Again, I had several small ones, but there was one, just to clarify, this is on page 5, where we're talking about the beginning of the draft suggestions for a rewrite. And what I proposed to do was to, there's a paragraph that begins Bonnie Sontag demonstrated on the screen, and I proposed to take out the last sentence of that, which says, purpose one and two in the council's amendment are potentially competing goals. And then change the first sentence of the next paragraph to, Rick Tainer said that the two bullets labeled competing goals are meant to summarize some of the discussion where several members did not want to create regulatory hurdles for STRUs while other members were concerned with neighborhood impacts.
That's fine with me. Any other edits to that one? All right, we'll take it as a, that is also a motion to approve. Minutes is amended. And I'll do roll call. If you are here, you, if you were not here, please abstain. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Staying.
Tanya?
I wasn't there, so abstain.
Yes. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Staying.
Bonnie? Bonnie? Yes, one, two, three. We don't actually have, we only have four people, but that's all the people that were there. So I think we're just going to make them approved. Not going to stand on ceremony about it. I'd like to say something about the minutes at this point. You may have noticed that they've gotten quite long, and they seem to be verbatim. That is going to stop. There was a misunderstanding between what I wanted and what Linda interpreted I wanted from earlier in, in the year. And so we've clarified that. And she's going to go back to summarizing comments, but making sure that she captures the essence of what everybody says. She's done an excellent job before, even before she started going back to the recordings and trying to do it verbatim. So I know it's going to be a relief for her and a whole lot less time not to do the verbatim. That being said, she is fully aware that, and she will, she'll comment after this if she wants, wants to, that anytime there is a question, obviously she can go to the recording, whether it's on Zoom or when we're back face to face. But we are going to see her workload lighten, I hope, by going back to her excellent note summarization of what people have to say from her previous activity with us. Does that capture it, Linda?
Yes, that's just fine. Everything's fine.
Everything's fine. And I know she appreciates also everybody's comments, whether they're grammatical, spelling, or quite significant. She's open to all that feedback, and I'm glad to see that people are taking notes as seriously as I have from the days when I was Secretary to the Board, because this is public record. And the good news is, people are interested in what we're talking about. And so they are likely to be reading our minutes. And we want them to reflect what was said at the meeting as accurately as possible, but also within reasonable workload for everybody. So thank you, everybody, for the effort you're putting into minutes. All right. Any other comments about minutes before we move on?
Just a quick question, actually. Are the amended minutes available then?
They're the ones that are posted. Those are the ones that actually get posted to the city website. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I was assuming that, but I just wasn't sure.
Yep. Okay, zoning amendments. So here we are on short-term rentals, next steps. Other than maybe adjusting the language for our proposal under number four, for the short-term rentals being precedent-setting, or what's the word for that? Taking precedence. Are there other, and cleaning up the typographical error in the use table, are there other pieces of this that we need to discuss? Do we still have enough outstanding that we need to have a serious discussion about it?
What is the language correction? I mean, I know you're talking about, we talked about cleaning up, tightening up that language, but I'm sorry what it is.
I think what I grabbed from what Eichmann said was something to do with the fact that if a property is ever rented for less than 32 days, it is a short-term rental property. He wanted that, he suggested that clarification so that when people go for a short-term rental, that's the license they're operating under, and they can't then operate as something else.
But I guess what I don't understand about that is that if they, if it, say it's a four-family house, four-family owner-occupied house, and the owner rents out one of the units as a short-term rental. If the owner stops doing that and rents it out as a long-term rental, there's no license involved, because it's an allowed use.
That's, that's the only thing that, yeah, I think when we're talking about lodging and bed and breakfast. I didn't know that it would keep them, they have to somehow, I guess they can't go back and forth between short-term rental and something else, including long-term one, without coming back for a new license. Because once they go for a long-term rental, they've given up their short-term rental license.
They've abandoned it, right.
Right. So that's what has to be incorporated into the language, I think.
So maybe more, more example, because nobody is going to want to go from a short-term rental to a bed and breakfast, because the rules are much stricter. So, so, you know, because they can't, they can't do it in most zoning districts. So maybe it's a question of what you're just saying there is, if somebody abandons the short-term rental use, they have to come back for a new license, if they start renting it on a longer-term basis.
I think that's the cleanest way to say it, now that you've used that example, yeah. Does that work for other people? Any other points of view on that?
I guess my only thought was that when we talked about the 30 days, or X number of days, whatever we decide, that it's also within a certain time period.
So many over the year.
I may have misunderstood, but it's 32 days within a calendar year, or 32 days within two years, or whatever it may be. I'm assuming it's 30, 30 years, 30 days within a calendar year.
Well, that extension, that starts getting into the licensing. We don't have any of that in the zoning. All it says is you-
No, I know what it says. I don't mean to interrupt. I know what it says. I was, that's why I asked about time, timing on what is allowed and not allowed. But I understand your point. That's okay.
Yeah, licensing will take care of the rest of it. The minute we start putting any more details in there, we start getting into regulations that Jennifer then has to control, and that's what we don't want to do.
Well, for the record, though, you will admit that we are putting a time detail in it, though.
That's the only one. Yep.
Okay. So-
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So now that we've said that, and now that I've said what I said, what I said was all about licensing. So really, what I said, if you abandon the STR use, then you have to apply for a new license. So really, that doesn't belong in zoning either. That really belongs in the licensing ordinance. I don't think we need to-
Then you have to say it another way. You have to say it in zoning language instead of in licensing language. I bet you can do that.
But the, but the short-term rental unit isn't allowed use. There's no permission that we need to give. It's a P, it's a P use.
Right, but in terms of the wording, now, how do we have it in there? "Notwithstanding above were proposed short-term rental use, but also conformed to a description of a lodging house or a bed and breakfast." In there somewhere. Can we incorporate this idea that maybe it's another item, maybe it's under relationship to other regulations?
Just to know what we're trying to say.
I wish we didn't have to add that, to tell you the truth. I thought it was, I thought he was saying it was fine, and then he got pushed, because he kept saying, "You need to differentiate the definitions of uses." And it was almost like he was sitting on the fence. And then he threw this one in, and I thought, oh. Because Charlie was pushing him so hard on the distinction of 110 and 111. We don't have to include this. I mean, if they want to put something in there, they could. If we're comfortable with what we have right now, and he basically said it was okay, but you could make it cleaner if you did something else, we could leave it, as this is our report, and this is our, what we could live with.
I would suggest leaving it.
Right.
It just complicates things too much.
Yeah, yeah, and I was, and I was thinking, if we did have a lodging house, which apparently we don't, but if we did, and all of a sudden they decided to rent for less than 32 days, they would then become a short-term rental unit under this, but they had only, only had a license for lodging house prior to this. So that would mean then the zoning would have to enforce that, as saying you have to close down the lodging house?
No, they wouldn't.
No, just change the licensing.
That's right. As long as it's in a district that allows a short-term rental.
Yeah, but then it's, but if that language is in here, it becomes part of the zoning, and you're saying that's part of zoning enforcement, right?
No, but we're not going to, we're only going to say that what we-
I agree, we're not, we're not going to say it. But if we did say it, that would give us more problems, I would think.
Well, the zoning enforcement officer would say, "You need to go change your licensing."
Okay.
I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Andy. I would agree with that.
Okay.
All right, so we're effectively saying, other than changing the typos in the use table, we're good to go with this, huh?
Yes.
And it's going to be just the, what would, I think we probably should include both the discussion points and the proposed new language, right? I mean, are we going to submit this thing just exactly the way it is and take out preliminary?
I think we could take out the items 1 through 8, the question marks, the questions.
Yeah. And just start where you started reading tonight?
Yeah. With a little bit of an introduction saying, "This is our report."
Yeah. All right, let's have that in final form. It'll take us, you know, if everybody reads it in advance, it'll take us just a few minutes to collect, to vote on it at the next meeting, and we can send it on. You know, it gives us a little more time to think about it if anything comes up. I don't want to cut off the discussion, even though that's going to be an institution for savings night. I still think we ought to see the final version of this and make sure that we're still all comfortable with it. And hopefully, Beth and MJ can join us that night, and we'll have a full, full board review of it, and then we'll send it on. Does that agree?
Good. Yes.
Yep. We'll do that for the next meeting. That closes out for-
Bonnie?
Yes, Ann.
Yes. Before we get to D, if there are speakers on D, the vice presidential debate has started, so please be brief.
Okay. See, there's only one other thing, and that's the, the other zoning amendment, which is 6C, which Andy said he was going to draft. Can you give us an update on when we're going to see that language, Andy?
Yeah, I had suggested possibly earlier today, giving it to you for your next meeting, but recognizing that you have the institution for savings, you might want to look at it at the following meeting, the first meeting in November. I was also going to reach out to the Chair of the Planning Development Committee, and if need be, other councilors, just to confirm a sponsor. But I think we're really just closing the loop to confirm the language that was, was discussed previously. I think Rick and Tanya had, had spoken to that and emailed some particulars around. So the assumption here, I think, is if you want to take a look at it at the next meeting, certainly, that's fine with me. But if not, we would do it at the first meeting in November.
Let's do it at the first meeting in November, and please bring in a sponsor who has, a person who's offered to sponsor it, just so we know who that is. And that'll give you a little more time to line that person up.
Sure.
Okay. Any updates, Andy?
No, thank you.
And I don't have any either. So anyone else on the board have anything they'd like to share with everybody? And I'll take a motion, pardon me?
I was just going to make a motion to adjourn.
Who's that?
That kid. That's Tanya and Ann.
All right. Motion by Tanya, second by Ann. Let me call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you, everybody, tonight, and off you go.
All right, bye.
Night, everyone.
Have a good night.